Board of Education, we welcome everyone tonight in the audience and we please, we want to ask everyone to please silence your cellphones and various electronics. And so let's please stand for the pledge. Mrs. Wegman, please. Hallmark. Mrs. Bates, present.
Mrs. Walton, present.
Mrs. Hoffman. Mrs. Jones, here. Mr. Manera. Mr. Nell. President Cooper, please. Present. I need a motion to actually amend the agenda. Mrs. Bates, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move that we remove Resolution Number Two.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Walton, aye. Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nell? President Cooper, please.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting April 11th, 2016, the regular board meeting April 11th, 2016, and the special meeting April 20th, 2016. So who? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Mrs. Walton, as Chair of the Student Achievement Committee, please present the April 11th, 2016 committee meeting report.
Thank you. The Student Achievement Committee, as some of you know, we announced that the last board meeting is going to be having a separate and additional meeting specifically for the code of conduct text and so that it can be prepared for our passage before the end of the school year. And so the short, rather short minutes that you have before you from the Student Achievement Committee on that meeting with that one particular topic, and I think we discussed some of the things that we wanted to see. Part of it is more family friendly, a more positive approach to our families rather than necessarily kind of a code of conduct only. It has a lot of effort put into it regarding support and ways for families to connect with the schools if they have issues and concerns. And again, today we met in the Student Achievement and saw the next draft of it and were very encouraged by it. I think the board will be very pleased with the direction that we're going.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Hoffman, as Chair of the Policy Committee, please present the April 18th, 2016 committee meeting report.
Sure. The first thing we discussed was how Mr. Weinstein is going to be working to update the FMI opium abuse and diabetes policies, so those will be coming back to us in June. And then we moved into two really big policies that we're working on right now. The first one was discussing the draft of the preschool enrollment policy using the input from the full board slash committee of the whole meeting. As you can see in this report, there are some new questions that arose from that conversation, so we'll be bringing those back to the full board for input at a later date. And then we discussed the latest draft of the magnet enrollment policy, which is going to come back to the full board for final input at next Wednesday's COW, so for community members who are interested, Cowman's Committee of the Whole, I'm sorry, we always use that abbreviation, Committee of the Whole, that's on May 4th at 11:30. And so for the board to know, as we did last time, we'll send an updated draft of that policy as well as some data. And if we can all make sure we review that prior to the next Committee of the Whole meeting so that hopefully this will be our last conversation and we can stick on our timeline to having a magnet policy finalized before the end of the school year. So I submit as written.
Thank you. Mrs. Walton, back to you.
Finance.
As Chair of Finance Committee, please present the April 19th, 2016 committee meeting report.
Thank you, Madam President. This was a kind of a chock full meeting, but some major highlights besides the routine presentation regarding revenue and expenditures that our treasurer so often presents to us and helping us figure out what some of the anomalies might be. The biggest issue that we dealt with was dating back to a January assignment that Member Bates had put forward in that we wanted to review what we call our supplier diversity efforts regarding minority women and local vendors. And fortunately for the administration, they really delivered very well on this report and the Senior Executive Board to help provide the information and research. And attached to your minutes, you'll see the CPS disparity analysis contracts awarded, which shows us a pretty good stead, if you will, when comparing us with minority contracts, women contracts, and local vendors in comparison with the city. You'll recall that the city produced a several hundred page report regarding their supplier diversity, minority vendor contracts awarded. And as you read through this, you will see that we are higher in virtually every category. And also, we will be adding it to our work plan that we have adopted tonight, that we will have quarterly review of our supplier diversity or minority vending contracts. We also asked, just as a way to look into the school piece and the equity piece, we went to administration supply this with a number of art, music, PE teachers in the district, school by school, and that was also very illuminating. And I know that as we learn more from Ernst &amp; Young and the Arthenon reports and audit, we will find out too about the CRA costs over time and how much some of the arrangements that we make in order to facilitate economic development is actually, at least on an annual basis, costing the district money, but of course helps develop economic stability as well. So those are the things I would bring to your attention. Final issue is, as you can see, we are also under the E-rate contract, and as we already know, we're going to be hearing from the Arthenon folks regarding the audit that's been supplied by, who are paid for by members of the community so that we can make the right decisions regarding our letting.
Excellent. Thank you. Do board members have any questions about the April 20th, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes?
No. I do want to point out a couple things or actually just one particular topic. Our Deputy Superintendent Laura Mitchell gave us an update on Vision 2020, and we may have heard some media coverage related to it, but specifically a multi-year summary of the plan focused on enhancing arts and culture, dual language, environmental science, gender-based, gifted, high technology innovation programs, stories, student enterprise, and virtual retool. And so again, I want to call your attention to those minutes to keep us focused on where we're moving with some of our meaningful schools.
When you have voiced vote to accept the committee reports, it's written, all in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, thank you. Tonight's presentation will be All Kids Thrive, and I'll turn it over to our superintendent for introductions.
Thank you. We have some great guests who have been partnering with the district. And at this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Tom DeWitt, Associate Chair for Education, Dr. Uma Kotegol, Executive Leader, Population and Community Health, and Dr. Rob Kahn, also of Children's Hospital, who is going to get us started. So thank you so much for being such great partners. You're right down the street and you're always looking out for the children in Cincinnati Children's Schools.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rob. And absolutely, we are here seeking deeper and more meaningful partnerships than we have had in the past. And I just want to start by showing you the Cincinnati Children's New Strategic Plan going forward for 2020. And for the first time ever, a central focus, one of our pillars is on community, right? So to help Cincinnati's kids be the healthiest in the nation through strong community partnerships. And why is it up there? Increasingly, a deep appreciation for the inequities in child health here in the county. What you have here is every bed day for a child in Hamilton County for three years, from 2012 to 2014. And you don't have to love data to look up there and say tremendous inequalities in the number of days children spend in the hospital based on the neighborhood that a child lives in, right? You may have heard zip code matters as much if not more than genetic code. And the question for our hospital is how do we make a better difference in the health of children in our own community? And I'll just call out that the same neighborhoods that are high in asthma, are high in premature youth, are high in inpatient bed days for mental health, and those are the neighborhoods you see off to the left. And we just call out two here, Avondale and East Christ Hill, because we know the very hard work we have to do to change how healthcare relates to the root causes of poor health, whether that's poverty, toxic exposure, food insecurity. And to me, with the increasing realization that the same kids we worry about are the kids you're worrying about, and how can we possibly not do it better if we're working closely together? So the goals, the specific measures we're looking at are 66,000 kids in Cincinnati. The key words are in red. Our job is to help, it's not necessarily to lead, but how do we help through these kinds of strategic partnerships with great community assets, institutions, agencies? Specifically, the goals are reduce the annual infant deaths in Hamilton County by 33%. That's the word for fatal Cincinnati and many others. Reduce that bed day disparity by 15% with focus on the two neighborhoods. But increasingly, it's more than just kids not being sick and not dying, it's how can we contribute to kids thriving? And so the next two goals, I think, are most directly relevant to your considerations is to develop a measure and ensure five-year-olds have a healthy mind and body, very much like kindergarten readiness, but what does it that the healthcare system, the primary care and pediatrics can do to deliver on that? Vaccines, concern about BMI or obesity, dental behavior, hearing and vision, and urgent literacy. And pediatricians have always cared about these issues, but we haven't delivered on the outcomes. So you have children arriving at age three into the preschool, right, age five into kindergarten readiness, or kids who have walked through our doors many times. We might have given a phone number for the dental clinic, or a phone number for vision, or a phone number for speech, but we haven't delivered on outcomes. And the last is really, again, why we're here tonight, how can we support you in ensuring that by third grade, every child is reading proficiently? How can we, through partnerships with Dr. Ronan and others, contribute to success there? Here's how we're thinking about it, with families and children always at the center, work groups thinking about third grade reading, deep influences in the neighborhood, infant mortality, and re-envisioning primary care to connect it better to the community. What is it we've done reasonably well at Children's Hospital? We want to offer our help to anyone who is interested in the community in partnership to achieve these goals, developing a learning system, data technology, how do we take what we've learned about improvement, work and quality improvement, and share it with agencies and others in schools and community, ethnography, and then research and evaluation for general lack of knowledge. Most important thing for us is that how do we invite everyone's best ideas and learn as quickly as possible, as smartly as possible, and do it together? And to do that, I just have this image of a network, right? And everybody has something to offer, and our goal is to set up a learning system or learning network in which every grade principal, every grade teacher, every grade preschool is connected to the doc, the school nurse, that is otherwise they've had difficulty connecting with. And I turn this over to Tom, just for a last final two things, how a little more clearly with third grade reading spacing.
Our concept here is that to really address the issue of reading in third grade, you have to start, we talk about from minus nine at conception almost through nine years of age. And the idea is through a network and a continuum, how do you continue to assess children through that whole spectrum? For example, if you ask the parents, "Do you have difficulty reading?", if they answer yes, 50% of those kids are going to have difficulty later on. The challenge in our system right now is we identify that, but how do we then get those kids into the necessary and appropriate support to help their reading? And it isn't just done at the medical center or even in larger communities, but often neighborhood by neighborhood, which is what Rob and particularly in Avondale and East Christ Hill are learning how to do that. So is there a lead person in the neighborhood who likes to read, who will read to all the kids in the neighborhood? Is there a grandmother or another lead, mother, parent, father could be as well doing that? So this is the concept, is working in conjunction from minus nine to nine to identify kids early, identify the systems that are available to help those kids and get them connected. Looking forward in terms of preschool, same thing, in place to identify and be in kindergarten as well with it. And this Thrive by Five, I've talked about, a healthy, thriving child at five, you know, does a much better job learning the child to his challenges than outside the room. And actually, in some ways, as you're seeing here, through the primary care's part of it, and through our valley, and through some newborn, and neighborhood influences are all parts that go together with it. So this is an integrated, very much community-focused activity. And as you can see in third grade reading, we're increasingly getting the key people across the community who are involved in the reading process and part of the process. And we've started some wonderful programs with CPS already, which are thinking about all these issues. And this is just a quick slide to show the same concept of how do you go from birth and prenatal through third grade of screening and assessment? This is the concept, is to integrate this all together, but it's part of the larger picture of community health.
So we'd be happy to entertain any questions. That was a lot, a short amount of time, but the bottom line again is we have the same goals for kids. Pediatricians have not been at the table reliably, their offices haven't been easy, and we would love to figure out how we're all closely together with you to achieve outcomes, starting from pregnancy on.
Board members, do you have any questions about the presentation? Mr. Nell?
I was thinking, please, based on the current situation at the hospital for the last eleven years, working for the information, more specifically, education and outreach within our community, providing these services. I got two questions. One is, I do know that when you learn to read, learn to be, not be yourself. I mean, also, I want to comment, it's a commitment, you know? I'm trying to translate, translate. But Rob, I wanted to ask you here, it says, my question would be, how do you offset fundamental need to read, who are living in a time of technological age, that's my first question. Second one would be, could you elaborate and name some of the social influences that you've identified?
Sure. So I'll start with the second one, then have Tom speak about your first question. So with social influence, it is the exact same ones that your schools face as the kids come in, we face, right? So we have a program where we partner with Legal Aid in our primary care clinic. We now refer over 800 kids, families per year, Legal Aid, and it is unstable housing, unfairly denied benefits, domestic violence, and so on. And so I think for us, it's through these partnerships, Legal Aid, the Free Store Food Bank and others, and then spreading those widely.
To your question about reading and technology, I think the appreciation now is it's important when children are really young, in first and second year of life, that's when books and reading and parent-child interaction is really critical. When they get to three, and they teach us all how to use that technology, and then we move on to that. But I think the key here is really early on, it's reading, something called dialogic reading is important, but also is the parent-child interaction sort of accentuates that. And as I say, later on, technology will help them, whether they're eBooks or that type of thing. But that's part of the message early on, is, you know, there's a program in PDF that's called Reach Out Read, where all pediatricians actually in Cincinnati talk to the new mothers about the important thing, they give them books and talk importance of reading. So it's a continuum. I don't think it's an either or, it's an and, a continuum.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I used to be employed by children's and I just love the leadership structure, and so thank you. Being engaged in the community and with families, I know it's highly valued and the same is for us, so I definitely believe that there's plenty of opportunities to work together. The more I continue to work in the community, the more I continue to represent the district and represent the community here in the district, I still feel that there is not a full grasp and understanding of what a community learning center is. And I'm wondering, have you been presented with what a community learning center is from the district?
I would say not in the depth we need to, right? So we have, I've been down to Euler's School a couple times and seen the incredible possibilities there, and in the same way, we're trying to think how do we do that kind of integrated structure, but we'd love an offline conversation to learn more about how you do those one-stop shots, how you engage the families and parents in the learning with the kids.
Right, and that's exactly where I was going to. It's not just partnering or just having a one-touch opportunity with school. It could be, but, so I would love for the administration to maybe connect offline and then kind of really show you Euler is one of our staples. Yes, but not all schools are Euler. And so I'm really glad what you're doing, I really value the presentation, because I believe that a connecting point is our community learning center. And our schools, all of our schools are going to have a community learning center. Those who do not have a community learning center will have one, and we definitely don't believe, as far as the policy is concerned, that they all have to look the same. And so to some, your engagement might be very limited, to some it might be a lot. So I just want to make sure that administration can connect with that and maybe provide with them a presentation of what it could look like, with the responsibility of the partners to be.
Certainly. Well, in fact, Children's Hospital is the health provider in three of our community learning centers. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I'm trying to, I was pausing because I don't know if that is actually a formulated question, but as I was hearing you talk about leveraging other community members, I find this idea really interesting, because it is important to educate parents on, for example, the importance of reading to your children. But I also think there are so many pressures on so many of our families' time. So I'm here thinking, like, my own house, I have two small children, and by the time they get home from school, we finish on, and they go to this practice and that, I said, "Well, then, I have to sign a form every night that says I've read to my kids for 20 minutes." And I know it's best for kids, I know it is best, and I have every resource available. I have a partner in my house as well, I have two children, and, you know, inside all of these privileges that a lot of our families don't have, and it's still so hard sometimes to get that 20 minutes in a night. And so I think it's super important that we're educating parents to know it's important to read, but there's also something about figuring out how do we build support structures so that if I am a single parent who's also working two jobs, I know it's important to read to my kids, but I honestly just do not have the time. So this idea of like, is there a grandparent in the neighborhood who reads to all of the kids, or is it the library that we're partnering with, or what? It's just an interesting one, because it's beyond just educating parents.
I think that I spend most of my time trying to improve systems, and the attention to how regularly a process happens is really important. And what we learn in this space is there's this aspiration, and then there's every day, what do I get done? And how do I help people do that? So it's going to involve community activation, it's going to involve more than one person having the burden of having to read, it's going to involve libraries thinking differently, and I think your comment about the community learning centers are important. We find even in our early work, that while people are very interested in it, a child might have, for example, a class in the morning around reading to cover the reading gap, but they come late to school. So while I have this theory that I got to read to them, they're in the class in the first 30 or 45 minutes, and then it is the time to leave. So it's getting deep to figure out if this is my outcome, what are my processes reliably, and how do I kind of solve it? And I think the gaps are many. We found the gaps in healthcare are many, and we think the gaps in, you know, in the space of education and families and communities are many. So we have to get down to those details to figure it out. What could be do? Could libraries, you know, bring those kinds of circulating things around? Could people read to people without having, it having to be you at 8:30 at night, you know, kind of figure out how am I going to get this one more task down so I could like check it off on my box? And it will take a community, and especially for underserved children, it will take a large part in community to do that. We've been working with a lot of mothers and fathers in neighborhoods to try and understand what their pressures are and what they may bring to bear, and we're impressed with their resilience and their ability to do it if we can support them, if we could bring a little bit to the team. So it's a great question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and service, and I think we're all very fortunate to have so wonderful partners, if you will, in so many ways, and through the leadership of the superintendent, have been really focusing on children's health. But two things in particular, I like that we're interconnecting reading and health, and I like the fact that we are, you know, it's not a silo thing, we're going to now do the health thing, and now we're going to do the educational thing. Bringing that whole interface together is fabulous. The other piece is, what we have problems with, as I understand it, is that while we offer, we have the school-based health centers, we have a number of health partners, we have the vision piece, we've got the asthma, you know, statistics that we're working on and what have you. One of the things is building trust with our families so that they'll sign the consent forms so that indeed we can deliver the medical and counseling things that we need to. So to start this early, to build trust, I think is going to really be a great long-term improvement for us. If it gets started early, and it's not siloed, it's everybody working together.
I have a concern with you, Rob, and I have been working in the early infant health space, about pregnant women and getting them to help early, and trust is probably the single most important thing that we need. And trust is shown by showing up every day, and you all do it all the time, but trust is lost very easily, and it's especially lost in multi-sector work, where you're handing off from one sector to another sector. And in a lot of cases, our children are in that space where, you know, all of that is happening, so that is at the core of what we need to be thinking about. So you're so right, and I know you will make us work better.
Excellent. Thank you for your presentation. I do just have one comment though. As I sit here and notice your strategic plan, it has a global focus on community, and I appreciate that, from your employees giving to making a difference, providing safe and exceptional care to every child and every family every day. These are the children that we serve in our school district, you all know that. And I really do appreciate the words you use, the integrated, community-focused approach. And so for me, understanding and knowing the kids in these communities that you have presented here, so critical need care, and I'll urge a strong partnership with the district and with Children's Hospital moving forward.
Thank you for your comments, and I would say that Dr. Mary Wellen has been an extraordinary partner both in the vision and thinking about this early and understanding how this intersection of health and education, yes, can only be good, so special thanks to her.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you. Okay, which is the section of our agenda where we have announcements, kudos, and retirements? I understand that we have two kudos. Ms. Walton?
Thank you. I'm really excited about this. I know when Mr. Nelson and I first got elected, I know part of our focus was our high schools and our past experience, and under the leadership of the superintendent, W. Superintendent, and certainly Assistant Superintendent, that have been often, we have been doing a great deal of work in moving the accreditation of all of our high schools with advanced ed. For people that are old like me, it's the old, more central system. And indeed, it's not, it's very rare that many big urban districts are able to get accreditation. And my understanding is that this past week, the Woodward Bulldogs, if you will, Woodward Technical High School was awarded that accreditation, which is a great, great thing to happen. And previously, a number of our high schools have been awarded that. And I understand that a number of our high schools are in the queue to continue that, so that, you know, we might be looking at the possibility at the end of this coming year, or at least the beginning of the following year after that, that we could be one of the very few urban districts that have a great number of our high schools that would all be accredited, which I think is just very essential. I'll put it, the assignment piece, I hope that we can have a presentation as to how that's been going, how that's been working, how many have been accredited, how many are in the queue to be accredited. But a particular congratulations and kudos to Woodward and the work with those folks that have been on the air.
Kudos. Mrs. Bates has a kudos to read. Yes, this is a surprise. Kudos to Public Affairs Communications Coordinator, Chris Wolf. Years ago, Miss Wolf stepped up to coordinate working with art teachers in the district to highlight the displays of student art that brightens the education centers made all the way. Those pictures remind us of just how talented and creative our students are. Nobody asked Miss Wolf to do this, and it was not a part of her job description. Her initiative shows how student-centric she is and how much she cares about the CPS mission. Thank you, Miss Wolf, for caring enough to donate your time to create a history for our students. Thank you, Ms. Wolf, for caring enough to donate your time to creating history for our students. Ms. Bates, please present retirements.
Yes, we have several staff members retiring as of June 1st. From our certificated personnel, Rosa B. Brinkman, Holly Burgess, Frances A. Hagan, Donna M. Peters-Brinkman, Michael D. Turner, Sammy L. Yates Jr., and then from our civil service personnel, Deborah A. Williams. We thank them for their service to our children, wish them well. President Danz, can we do one more kudos?
Yes.
Because Walnut Hills High School was again named the number-one high school in the state of Ohio.
Kudos, kudos to all. I appreciate that. I have an announcement, and I'm going to apologize for having to read so much, but this is critical and important. And so this is an open letter to families and residents of Clifton, Clifton Heights, University Heights, Fairview, Cuff, and Tregrow Village. Dear families and residents, we are writing to share facts and context behind recent discussions about educational needs of our district and what we believe is an exciting opportunity to restore a vibrant neighborhood school serving your communities. After a decline in enrollment, the district is witnessing growing demand in many areas, including yours. Contrary to state demographic predictions of an enrollment of 28,000, CPS now has a student population of 34,000 students. The good news is that more young families are moving into neighborhoods like yours and are entering their neighborhood public schools. Currently, CPS is surveying families in Clifton, Cuff, and Tregrow Village about their interest in enrolling their children in a neighborhood school in the area. We also will be inviting families to attend in May an informational session about programming, including our successful blended model of a neighborhood school combined with a gifted academy of a new potential, of a potential new neighborhood school. One location option being pursued is creating space in the old Clifton School Building, owned by CPS and currently leased by the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, CCAC. Under the current lease with CPS, CCAC is entitled to reimbursement for building improvements estimated at about or between $1 to $2 million. In addition, the district has offered to give CCAC outright the carriage house it now leases from CPS, negotiate rental of other district space, and offer CCAC the opportunity to be a lead agency to provide arts programming as to school's community learning central partner, which would give CCAC an ongoing presence in providing arts programming to students, families, and residents. Ultimately, we respect the role of families to determine the best educational options for their children. At the same time, we have seen in other communities and the CPS Annual Stakeholder Priority Survey that strengthening neighborhood public schools is highly valued. This has led Cincinnati Public Schools committing to strengthening neighborhood schools through our recently released Vision 2020, My Tomorrow Plan. With support from families and residents of your neighborhoods, we would like to incorporate a neighborhood school serving your communities as a part of that plan. Thank you all for all that you do to contribute to a thriving Cincinnati. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. And so let's talk about public lists. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Mrs. Wagner, at the end of the table in the beautiful green dress, will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. One other item to mention is when there is one topic that's scheduled for more than any 30 minutes at a time, we have to limit the amount of time. And so we have 19 folks scheduled to speak about the same topic. And so we will limit that conversation or those topics to one and a half minutes. And so we're asking you to please be very cognizant of the buzzer that will ring, and I'll queue that up when we get to that portion. But for now, please come to the podium, Mr. Craig Rosen, followed by LaShonda Johnson, followed by Michelle Dillingham.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. You have three minutes, please.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Roman, Treasurer Wagner, Administrator Staff, and guests. In addition to being the proud parent of two young CPS scholars, another role-hanger pick is President Case, as many might know, Cinsinadians active to support education. In light of the board's ongoing discussions of the possibility placing a new money levy on the November 16 ballot, I'm pleased to announce the reactivation of Case. To that end, it is my privilege to share, Case, Cinsinadians active to support education, has once again retained the services of Jan Soltmoller as Case political strategist. Mr. Soltmoller is in the audience. If you'd please stand there. It's also exciting that Case has altered Mr. Soltmoller's contract and payment structure so as to have full-time, year-long support of his engagement. This will provide ongoing continuity and support as we look towards the future. As an ongoing best practice, Case will invite all CPS board members, Superintendent Roman, Treasurer Wagner, in addition to others engaged in supporting our district, to our board meetings and advisory committee planning sessions. Case looks forward to a decision on the possibility of a new money levy, however the board deems appropriate. Thank you for all that you do to support Cincinnati schoolchildren in our extended communities.
Thank you. Ms. LaShonda Johnson, followed by Michelle Dillingham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm LaShonda Johnson, MyTomorrow Parent Ambassador graduate for Parents with Public Schools and a member of the LSDMC for Woodford High School. But here today, I'm just an engaged parent. I'm not here to discuss the academic or technical courses that are being provided by Woodward, but to speak of a positive culture that they've mastered. And what I mean by that, I reviewed Harvard Business Review, and there were so few things on there that I agree with. The culture is an organization's immune system, is a form of protection that prevents wrong thinking and wrong people from entering in the first place. The organization and culture is a sum of the values and rituals which serve as a glue to interpret, to integrate the members of the organization. And Woodward has wonderful synergy going on there. They have a culture that fits perfectly with the My Tomorrow concept, which is to make everyone feel inclusive despite their ideas, creating a culture that is conducive to learning. I contacted the regional coach for the Ohio Department of Education in his side review. The quality, the strengths here in the quality Career Technical Studies team found that the career choice this class is a great addition to the curriculum to target the seven and nine graders. There's the right student, the right program, for the right job. The workforce developer there has created a career cafe for the Woodward students, where they can build relationships with potential employers and provide opportunities for our students to continue their professional career as they graduate. And this has helped her to, she's picked the right student, the right job, and thereby maintaining those professional relationships. Another strength is the literacy team, and this attests to the culture I spoke of. There's a positive rapport between the students and the teachers, the attempt to keep the students engaged. There's a new principal there. She's come ready to work. She's rigorously recruiting parents for the PALS program. She found 40 parents that attended the Leadership Academy. And this is where parents and RAs learn about ways to better support their students and move toward graduation. There's a community resource coordinator that has taught to build morale in the community as well as within the school. There was an open house that was most inviting at a group and entertainment. They had a limits empowerment conference that explained what it is worth to being a lady, the acronym for worth being wisdom, optimism, respect, talent, and humility. I also was fortunate enough to be a judge and invited for the staff recess. They had a staff recess where we, as staff, participated in obstacle courses, musical chairs and baskets.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michelle Dillingham.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Dillingham, resident of Kennedy Heights, Woodford LSDMC member. Tonight, I'm addressing you as a member of the Cincinnati Educational Justice Coalition, or CEJC. We are partnering with the parents of public schools of Greater Cincinnati to host an LSDMC conference this Saturday at the mayor's inn right next door, beginning 9:00 a.m., free lunch until 3:00. This inaugural conference is offered to all who are interested in improving the LSDMC or local school decision-making committee process for their school. Parents and community members are especially encouraged to attend. The program includes various topics and guided interactive sessions where solutions to typical challenges facing LSDMCs will be shared. The success of the Community Learning Center model at CPS has helped transform our district. And the elements of this model include curricula that's engaging, culturally relevant, such as the arts and AP courses; two, emphasis on high-quality teaching, not on high-stakes testing; three, wraparound support such as health and social, emotional services; four, positive discipline practices; five, authentic parent and community engagement; and finally, six, inclusive school leadership. The LSDMC is the vehicle by which all this happens, and so we are excited about the conference this weekend. I heard of a recent field trip that some of you took to an Indiana charter school. And again, I urge you to not be distracted by what may seem to be better models. As you know, the district is still in need of resources and support to support the critical role of resource coordinators so that the transformative power of the Community Learning Center model can be fully realized. There are many people here committed to supporting the district in this matter. And we know that districts around the country are literally protesting, going on hunger strikes, and fighting for what we already have here. Members of the board, we urge you to do all you can to support authentic engagement right here at home, renew your commitment to this district policy, and lend your leadership to supporting LSDMCs. In closing, an example of the power of LSDMCs, I'm a proud member of Woodford's LSDMC, and we are right now working with the district with an added emphasis of arts and culture for the children there. And so we are hosting another Walk-In for Public Education at Woodford on May 4th. We are walking in in conjunction with over 80 districts across the nation supporting public schools. Parents, community teachers will walk into Woodford once again to uplift the work being done there and draw attention to the positive role of public education. Thank you. I'll leave flyers about these two events with your secretary.
Thank you. Our next set of speakers have signed up to talk on the same topic. And so again, anytime there is a single topic for discussion that would go 30 minutes or more, we have to limit the time. There are 19 speakers. I will call them in order. I ask that you please come to the lower podium, perhaps to line up as we call several names at one time. We will ask you to limit your comments to one and a half minutes. Our first speaker is Christine Vanderbent, followed by Brian Gary, followed by Brian Kerwin.
Good evening. I'm Christine Vanderbent, and I'm here this evening representing Fairview, Clifton, German Life Schools, LSDMC. Tonight and in the coming days, we, as community leaders, have decisions to make regarding the programming network, CCAC. The CCAC is the destination for Fairview and non-Fairview students after school, on weekends, and during the summer months. Though there is one critical piece to all of this that we should not forget, and that is the Fairview School. And our LSDMC has developed a plan that would support the expansion of Fairview with before, during, and after-school resources. This plan supports the district with a more fiscally responsible option and a plan that would enhance the learning opportunities for the students at Fairview and surrounding CPS schools. This plan, designed by the LSDMC, would align with the cultural arts focus of the CCAC and give us the space needed. Also, our plan aligns with the new mission and vision that we have outlined this year. As an LSDMC, we want to be strategic and forward-thinking to ensure that Fairview continues to be a successful educational experience now and in the future. And this collaboration with the CCAC will support our endeavors.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Gary, followed by Brian Kerwin, followed by Uri Selah.
Greetings, honorable board members and superintendents. I'm Brian Gary. I'm a graduate of CPS from the School for Creative and Performing Arts, former band director at North Adam Dale at Sands, Montesorda, former art teacher, and after degree in music composition. The Clifton Cultural Arts Center means community. It means a sense of place. It is an anchor for so many people and groups. It means thousands of children get art programming that they need and they may not otherwise receive. The CCAC means hot chocolate and cookies for my kids and a warm feeling for my whole family and friends. Place matters, and the CCAC has created a place-based Clifton identity for our metropolitan landscape and offers arts and culture experiences which are the heartbeat of our city. The center is a place that provides a unique sense of place to such organizations as the Transgender Day of Remembrance and the Safe and Supported Group, the Light House Organization, which helps homeless youth, and of course, provides a place for scores of local artists and organizations. I implore you not to stop the momentum of this great institution and to allow the CCAC to stay in the building that has become home to the most active arts, music, and dance center in the city. I have faith that together, we can find a solution that works for our kids and community. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Kerwin, followed by Uri Selah, followed by Dick Aft, followed by Alicia Roslett.
Hi, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of a daughter who's at Fairview, Clifton, and I'm also a resident of Clifton. And as a family, we use the programming at CCAC all the time. My daughter takes lessons there. Always take in family programming that they have. It's a great institution. I think it's great that CPS, where you're exceeding the predictions, the state demographic predictions, 28,000 up to 34,000. The reason why people are moving back into the city district is for institutions like the CCAC. For all this stuff that's been happening over the Rhine and downtown, it's things like this that's driving the reverse exodus, I guess, back into the city. If we start messing with some of these institutions, we're going to start driving people away there. And in addition to just these institutions, it's also the great work that's happening at the schools that are working, such as Walnut Hills, such as Fairview. And we need to improve and keep that going, but not at all the cost, not at a cost that might affect a great institution that's not only valuable to the neighborhood of Clifton, but also to the city as a whole. Thank you. I'd like to give my time to the listeners who need their one and a half minutes to have a place.
The next speaker, our next speaker will be Mr. Dick Aft, followed by Alicia Roslett, followed by Cedric Michael Cox, followed by Jillian Stow.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, for your time. My name is Dick Aft. I've lived in Clifton for 29 years. Because of my experience in needs assessment and fundraising, before there was a CCAC, a number of neighbors approached me to ask me, did I think that the neighborhood would support both programmatically and financially a CCAC? I said, no way. I was dead wrong. What I found is, as I'm wearing a What I found is, as I'm wearing a red shirt tonight, CCAC has caught fire. It's a thriving institution that's serving our children and families. Madam Chair, I'm very glad to see that you too are wearing red. Thank you, and thank the LSDMC, Clifton panel meeting, and all of those folks who are here tonight and active with CCAC. Together, we will find a win-win solution for this issue. Appreciative of your letter and all of the work that's gone into it, and I know that the future is very bright for all of us, and we'll all be wearing red at the next meeting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia Roslett, followed by Cedric Michael Cox, followed by Gillian Sella, and followed by Leslie Mooney.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alicia Roslett. I'm a Cincinnati resident, artist, and an early childhood educator. I'm asking the Board of Education to honor the lease agreement at the Clifton Cultural Arts Center. Children that attend CPS schools directly benefit from the partnership with the center, and it would behoove the district to maintain this reciprocal relationship. According to the National Endowment for the Arts, Office of Research and Analysis Research Report Number 55 in 2012, and I quote, "Arts in schools increase test scores and lower dropout rates." The report, Critical Links, contains sixty-two academic research studies that, taken together, demonstrate that arts education helps close the achievement gap, improves academic skills essential for reading and language development, and advances students' motivation to learn. Longitudinal data from twenty-five thousand students demonstrated that involvement in the arts is linked to higher academic performance, increased standardized testing scores, more community service, and lower dropout rates," all things that we're trying, I'm sorry, I'll quote, "all things we're trying to work towards." Back to the quote, "These cognitive and developmental benefits are reaped by students regardless of their socioeconomic status." And this is quoted from the American for the Arts website. "Brosnan and Merril in 2010 were quoted in a Newsweek cover story in 2010 that looked at creativity in childhood and compared the findings with lifetime accomplishments, study purchases, and as adults." Thank you for your...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cedric Michael Cox, followed by Gillian Sella, followed by Leslie Mooney, and Dick Waller.
I'm just going to speak in the heart. As an art educator and as a visual artist, first of all, I'm very honored to be one of the artists in the city, working with CTS Public Schools as artists residents for, with working with Dr. Rudnick. And the thing that I hear about the most is there's not enough time in a day. You know, I've been a teacher with St. Francis Sarah School, Tach High School through the Art Academy, and Mount Washington, an after-school program, and there's just not enough time in a day to tell a kid, put your crayons down, put this down, you cannot, we gotta go, another class is coming in. My normal class is only forty minutes long. And some of my students go to the Clifton Cultural Arts Center and other places, and it's because of institutions like this, the extended school day is important, but you need more time to nurture these, these skills, to develop these, these ideas, this vision of life and how to interpret life through art. And keeping this organization, the CCAC, intact the way it is can only further strengthen the community and the community as a whole. I'm also partnering with Fairview in the next couple of weeks on a mural that's going to take place at the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and we'll be bringing the students from Fairview, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, to the Clifton Cultural Arts Center to work on this wonderful work of art. And it's inspiring to me, as an artist who exhibited there, and as a resident of the city, just to be involved with such an institution that really fosters the arts and our community and the surrounding school. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gillian Sella. I'm a mother of small children at CPS, and I'm also a performer in the Cincinnati Symphony, so I'm involved in the arts. And I know you know how important the arts are to children, and I was struck last week how they had this thing about an opera coming once, a one-time opera, all the enthusiasm there was for that, that's terrific. I think that sounded like a great project, but the CCAC is offering arts every day for kids in the whole community, of the whole town of Cincinnati. And I hope you've been to some Wednesdays on the Green to see how diverse the audience is there. So it's a really strong organization that's been doing well. I also want to say I have some major concerns as a Clifton resident. Already, the traffic and parking is very dangerous, the way it is now for Fairview drop-off. I'm afraid a kid is going to get hit there. It's really a problem. So if we're adding more schools to CPS, to that location in that neighborhood, more children, more and more schools, that's a major concern for the community. Cars can get stuck, what if there's an emergency vehicle? But most importantly, I think a kid is going to get hit, and that's going to be a tragedy. Also, it's unfortunate that Fairview wasn't built bigger. I know that the principal did ask for that at the time it was built, it was pretty obvious that if you moved that school to such a thriving community, there would be more demand. It's not really a surprise for people who've been following Fairview, but now it seems like ketchup.
Right. Our next speaker will be Leslie Mooney, followed by Dick Waller, followed by Katie Johnson, and Dave Allen.
Uri yielded his time to me.
Oh, so we had, she, with your name on it? I hadn't gotten two yet. Okay, sure.
Oh, it's a bad one. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. We are hopeful that at CCAC, that when we have an open dialogue with the CPS board in early May, that we can establish an understanding and a relationship where your plans for the former Clifton school building are communicated directly to CCAC and the community, including plans that directly affect CCAC's future. I would like to address, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I'd like to address the points in the open letter to families in Clifton, Cove, and Spring Grove that was passed out just about an hour or so ago before the start of this meeting. Frankly, I have a concern that the Board of Education continues to speak to CCAC through the media or other indirect means. It would really be helpful to communicate, to our communication, to speak to us directly. For instance, no one has ever directly talked to us about, nor have any official offer or any details been offered for, one, the rental of district space, or quote, "shared space" with CPS. We first learned of this by seeing a draft of the survey sent to a limited number of families in the three neighborhoods that I mentioned before. Then we heard that CTM, after their meeting with Superintendent Ronan, shared that with us, and then we heard it again through the Greater Cincinnati Schools Facebook page. Similarly, with the offer of becoming a lead agency. We're not exactly sure what that means, or what you guys intend for that to mean. The only communication about the Carriage House is what was shared in a few sentences at the board meeting on April 11th. Again, there has not been an official offer with any details provided. And to quick giving CCAC outright the Carriage House into perspective, we're talking about a building that needs at least three-quarters of a million dollars in renovation, and roughly offers ten percent of the programming space that our current site offers to CCAC. So in closing, I'd like to ask that you provide us a detailed written plan and schedule a meeting to talk about the transfer of the Carriage House ownership, being a lead agency, and sharing or renting space. Until you do that, we are asking that you no longer communicate these options because they have not been discussed or vetted, and I think it just represents a fundamental lack of understanding of what goes on at CCAC and what the community has invested in this.
All right.
For your time.
Our next speaker will be Dick Waller, followed by Kate Johnson, Dave Allen, and Margaret Glech.
Stupid fair friends.
My name is Dick Waller. I'm going to have a lot of trouble following that act. A thriving arts community, but we have, if you have a thriving arts community, it's a sign of a great community. I feel sorry for all of you, because you have a real problem. How do we deal with this? And I'm just going to say that try to find a way that the CCAC can continue on to put the remarkable job they're doing in our community, is what I want to say.
Ms. Katie Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I just wanted to speak to you as an educator, as a theater practitioner and scholar, as a parent of a child at Fairview, as a resident of Clifton, and as a donor and a member of the CCAC. And you see, all of us here share those identities. They are not mutually exclusive. We want a solution that enables both of these thriving institutions to continue, not to pick them against one another, not to shoehorn one into a contaminated building, and to overstep, on the other hand, one of the most thriving schools in the city. Do you realize that already those kids start eating at eleven-thirty in the morning? They start at nine-fifteen. They finish eating at one o'clock. When you add another one hundred or two hundred students, where are you going to feed them? Where are you going to let them have gym if there's just one gymnasium? How are you going to accommodate that, not merely by classroom space over at the CAC? In closing, please work with the plan for LSDMC. Please let us have our arts center and to keep the school thriving and to come together. Please do not shut down the CAC, CCAC. Please do not thin and weaken the integrity of Fairview-Clifton Language School. Thank you.
Next, Mr. David Allen, followed by Barbara Glech, followed by Chelsea Gordman.
Thank you, Gordon. I grew up in a small farm town where being an artist was not important, was not that. Unfortunately, what was valued was being a scholar and athlete, which I was meager of. So what I was was a lost child, all the way through school until my senior year, where I went to a program, a new program, where I'd go to school half-day and work half-day. My work job was as a graphic designer. There was a man in town who built architectural models and renders. I discovered there that I didn't have talent, talent that was valued, much to my parents' superhymn. I was blind to go to the Columbus College of Art Design. I was accepted, and I graduated with a VFA. I had had a long and successful career as a graphic designer, art director, vice president of advertising agencies. I have designed a, I have a business now called Green Merge, where I have designed green products for alcoholers. I am also working on a new project with a former partner of mine, a business partner, where we will be helping companies prepare for global war. All of this happened by accident for me. What CCAC does is allows children to see every day what art can do for them, can see adults reforming war at the school as artists, and encourages them, lets them know that this could be a career. Thank you.
Madam President, board members, Superintendent Ronan, and invited guests. My name is Barbara Glech. I moved to Cincinnati forty-six years ago, and I love living in Clifton. I know that Clifton is politically active, and I want to remind you that every time there is a school levy on the ballot, Clifton is one of the leading supporters for education in Cincinnati. We never forget that that's a very vital issue, and it's important to us as individuals and as members of this community. I want to remind you that in the time that I've, well, in the forty-five years we have listed on your, on your website, there were a few renewals passed, eleven renewals passed, and eight new issues passed. But unfortunately, twelve new issues were defeated, and one, only one renewal has failed. We want to lead you and the rest of the city into supporting the financial needs of this district, and it's not going to happen if our disappointments are so great that we cannot continue our great support. I'm a former officer, treasurer, and president of Cincinnati's Act of to Support Education. I have a long history of working for levies. Don't disappoint us. Try to make some sort of creative and mutually agreeable settlement.
Ms. Chelsea Gordman, followed by Carolyn Miller, followed by Kip Egan.
Hello. My name is Chelsea Gordman, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm a graduate of CPS and a proud alumna of your schools. I am grateful to the educators I had at CPS who gave me the confidence to speak to you today, taught me how to rally passionately around the cause, and instilled me the belief that one must fight for the preservation of institutions they believe in. And thank you for your dedication to providing our city's children with the same opportunities. I am here today as an arts educator and artist, a Clifton resident, and the head of local arts organization and gallery space. Myself and many other volunteers have created a petition in support of the CCAC, which has accumulated over eight-hundred-and-fifty signatures and as well as hundreds of well comments in less than a week's time. I would like to share with you our message. We are a group of artists, institutions, and friends of the Clifton Cultural Arts Center who believe that the CCAC is a vital part of Cincinnati's arts community, is a valuable partner in offering community-quality education to children and families across Cincinnati. CCAC plays a vital role in supplementing the children's arts experiences. Field trips to CCAC have allowed for broaden opportunities for learning, putting students in direct contact with community-oriented art projects and pieces. The Clifton Cultural Arts Center has engaged with families of surrounding communities and has worked extensively with Rockdale School, Fairview School, Clifton and Mass and the communities, raising money specifically to provide art experiences and transportation free of charge when it was not available elsewhere. Clifton Cultural Arts Center provides an invaluable service to the fine arts and performing arts of our community. This institution gives a platform for both established artists and emerging talent. They provide a volume of space unlike any other institution allowing for the fostering of large-scale and contemporary work. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Miller. Hi, I'm Carolyn Miller. My husband and I are both here tonight again, along with many others, to show our support for the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and we agree with everything that's been said so far. I just wanted to make one additional point about a little history of the Fairview-Clifton school. We're longtime Clifton residents, and we remember the strong support that Clifton families gave to the Fairview German Language Program when it started as a magnet school many, many, many years ago up in the Cott neighborhood at the Fairview site. Clifton families were crucial, along with many other families, in developing the school into the strong, vibrant, and excellent school it is today. When the decision was made to move this German Language Program into a new school building in Clifton, Clifton residents were very excited to host this terrific program because they assumed that access for Clifton neighborhood families would be maintained and even increased. Now, with the new lottery system, access for neighborhood families has sadly diminished. We would like to make a simple suggestion. We encourage CPS to use a weight or set aside in the lottery for neighborhood children who live in proximity to any magnet school in the district, including Fairview-Clifton. This would tie into CPS's efforts to create community school, as well as furthering the health of these children by encouraging walking to school instead of needing bus transportation. We all know that excellent schools thrive when they are advanced to supportive families and communities. Please keep the CCAC there.
Mr. Kip Egan, followed by Lisa McKenzie, followed by William Messer, and Carol Creel.
Again, thank you for letting us speak tonight, and thank you for coming to the CTM.
Again, thank you for letting us speak tonight, and thank you for coming to the CTM meeting, Chairman, and pledging to work with the community. I'm not gonna talk about the CCAC. I'm gonna talk about what happens outside of the CCAC. Right now, we have a very, very challenging traffic situation. There are times, if you live on Galpin, you can drive up Galpin, and there are cars parked on both sides of the road, and there is a line of people queued up in the drive, in the actual roadway. All the way down, you're going all the way up to Galpin. So this is dangerous. We've seen people look and go in the wrong direction. We've seen people get nervous and do U-turns. I believe that the school board not only has responsibility to the students that go to the schools, but they have responsibility to the communities that those schools are existing. I think it would be a bad decision to add another 400, 300, 200, 100 students to that location. Every day, it's a traffic nightmare. We are concerned about emergency vehicles. If there's another national tragedy as they have in other parts of the country, how do we want first responders to get there, the police to get there? And they say that it's not a matter of minutes, it's a matter of seconds to get there. What if there's a fire at the rec center? What if there's a child that needs to have an ambulance? We are frightened. We are frightened that this increase in numbers, increasing buses, increase of families getting, dropping their kids off, is going to be a parking nightmare. Not only a parking nightmare, but it's a future parking disaster.
Ms. McKenzie, William Messer, and Carol Freel.
Hi, I'm Lissa McKenzie. I'm a teacher at the Art Academy as well as Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and my son went through Cincinnati Public Schools. I have to say, I was shocked when I saw that picture because CCAC doesn't work like that. We don't tell people what to do. We're a grassroots organization, and the reason why we're so strong is because we collaborate. That is, that is the way we roll. And I really wish that, I just hope that you will collaborate with us. We're full of really smart, creative people who can come up with good solutions to problems. I want you to deal with what is. What is is what's already there. I also want the parents here in Clifton to be aware of what is, and that we also have a really great school, surprisingly enough, Rockdale. Rockdale has the number one principal in Ohio. Rockdale is, has empty seats. People don't know about Rockdale, and I think they really should, because I think that there is a neighborhood element already available to us, and I think that it would be really strengthening, Rockdale would be good. We already do. We are already a partner with Rockdale CCAC, just the same as Children's Hospital and the Addendale Development Board and Cincinnati Zoo. And if you cut down Cincinnati, like CCAC, to one-tenth, we can only do one-tenth as much support, not only to Fairview, but also to Rockdale. And also, can I say to the adults? Because if you have adults who are creative, they make better families, happier students.
Ms. William Messer, followed by Carol Freel.
Thank you very much. I'm here in support of the Clifton Cultural Arts Center. I attend art classes and talks at CCAC. I've taken classes there. I've brought kids to puppet shows there. I've danced to music on the lawn, and much more. Particularly to see how many of you got the mail saying you want to keep the Clifton Cultural Arts Center here, to please wear red by my count, including pink and dusty rose. That's the majority of you. So thank you for supporting us. As you can see by the sea of red in the office, the CCAC is an institution about which there is much passion from its community. I want to remind you, this is the same community which, when threatened to lose its cinema 25, 30 years ago, rallied, demonstrated, created mile-long protests.
That's right.
Even met with Wendy's Board in Dublin, Ohio, to prevent it from becoming a fast-food outlet. And there's a cinema there. More recently, when threatened with the loss of Keller's Market, the community again coalesced to fight against becoming a food desert. It took us years, but Clifton Market begins construction in days. So you can see similar passion and even coming together over the threatened loss of an arts center, our arts center. The obvious lesson is that in this issue, it will be better to work with us than against us.
That's right. That's right.
Ms. Carol Freel.
Good evening. My name is Carol Freel. I have lived in Clifton for four to five years. My three children collectively attended Cincinnati Public Schools for 39 years. I and most of the Clifton community have always been very supportive of schools, of school levies, tax levies, et cetera. The Clifton Cultural Arts Center is a wonderful organization. It was built by the tireless efforts of many people in the community, donations from many of us and from foundations and the city and the state. You will be obligated to repay them, I think, more than $2 million. If you value the hours that all those people worked with their hearts and souls to create this building, you'd need a couple of million more. It seems to be somewhat unfair to take a building that was abandoned many years ago and that has been restored to a great, great building by the efforts of people supporting the Clifton Cultural Arts Center, and now to take it back that it's now a great place. Maybe you own some other buildings. I don't know, but instead of paying that money back to CCAC, use it for something constructive. Take another building and renovate it and use that for your overflow.
Right.
And I understand there's going to be a large levy this November, and if it passes, we could start using some of that money for a neighborhood school in Clifton, for adding on to the current school, for many things. But it's a waste of money for you to give it back and to take that building that people have worked so hard to create.
Amen.
Thank you all for your attendance here tonight. I'm being urged to remind the public to read the open letter to the family.
We did.
And we will continue to talk about the opportunities that we've discussed. We'll clarify in our next meeting, and we did make direct offers when we did meet in April. So thank you again for your attendance. Mr. Nels, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Most of you have it in your possession, Sergeant. We have a regulation to establish the naming of the UCD.
Karen?
Aye.
Mr. McNair?
Aye.
Superintendent Fonseley, can I report?
No, I am not. Senator, it's true.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of Superintendent Ronan? Is there a second? Any discussion? On page two, under E, remember the article? Voting on that this evening, and previously, that person was in the teacher position instruction office coordinator. I'm not sure that when that person moves from that position, that position also will be filled. Not necessarily. The director of HR may, which you now heard, may well be, so there's two roles, right? The role of chairman. And Kamal. So it is up to discussion. It's up to discussion. You may not have the privilege of applying to anything to the mayor or jobs. We certainly have the power to try to resist. Any other comments or questions? Do I have any motion to approve recommendations of the superintendent? Is there a second?
I'm reading. Okay, I'll get her back home. I'll get her back home.
Ms. Gordman?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. McNair?
Aye.
Mr. McNair?
Aye.
Mr. McNair?
Aye.
Ms. McDavid?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the reported treasurer's statement?
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Thank you. Yeah, on page three, what we talked about last time, that an offset issue. I think I think we repeated, but I'm sure there's a reset.
Yeah, this is third actually. The issue occurred actually at the beginning of the year, there was a transition in employees in the garbage. And so the contract in Florida, for the contract, for the mortgage, this is just having sort of, you know, they form a team for it. This particular company is informing, is saying it informs every school every day, and so it's massive, a lot of data, so we're really trying to work on the process together.
If I could also ask on page six, the think pads, I understand, but I think the public might want to know why CPS feels compelled to do this regarding, I think in so long things are being taken care of. The role that we play as auxiliary is especially in terms of technology, that people know about special services, they may not know what we do in the auxiliary schools regarding technology.
Right, so auxiliary function actually has three functions in our public schools, and they have decision-making, and how is this functioning?
Thank you. My last one, I think the board of ownership probably had some additional conversation, not conversation, but information. On page seven, number 18, the Queen City Transportation, I know the president was looking at that as well, so we have somebody that can describe that. I know he's got this in the board throughout this process, but I.
In fact, this is a name, so we can give us a comment. I understand that. We can have a poll here.
I figure, maybe you can remember a line.
Good evening.
Good evening. In regards to the Queen City contract that you see in front of you, that is a piece of the transportation contract that will go forth for the next few years for transporting the kids. That represents a portion of the total transportation of the kids. In fact, there are 322 buses, and that represents 100 buses of the 322.
How does this impact the first student, or is this in place of first student?
Well, what this actually does is, first student initially, previously or currently right now has 322 buses. This contract represents a piece of that, so their portion has decreased significantly. This represents about a third of their.
Okay, so help me understand, Queen City is, is this a contractor first?
No, they are an independent contractor.
This is an addition to first?
What's happened is, first student's contract is expiring this year, okay? They have 322 buses currently that they're servicing, are double bus contract. And we released an RFP back in January. Of that, we have many vendors who, like I said, proposals, of which Queen City was interested in over rolling.
And I thought I was the one to speak Spanish here, but we are not speaking the same communication, the same language here. This is vibrant, this is transformative, this is innovating. I don't see, I mean, this is, has transformed communities. This is a great way to become a partner in doing the things that energize our schools, whether it's art, or health, or special services, social services. So can we assign somebody to figure out where are we failing in communicating these two policies?
Do we understand?
I will certainly work with the Fairview LSDMC to make sure they oversee all the agency's.
I think it's broader. I think it's all of our schools that don't have a community learning center. I think it's all of our schools who, you know, here's the thing. Everybody, everybody always says, and this is the.
Because we had talked, we had talked about that. So I think, I'm trying to help our support. I think what we're asking for is just some clarification on some opportunities related to what a community learning center could be. And as we talk about, you know, working through the issues with Clifton and CCAC and that, really spelling out what we're meaning by the opportunity to be a community, a lead agency for a community learning center. Because I agree with you, there's obviously some miscommunication there, or maybe we're not being clear enough. So I think it will be important, you know, especially given what I heard tonight, in that we've not given any clear, concise offers and that, because that's absolutely not true.
Ms. Johnson?
I just like Board Member McNair to repeat the policy numbers just as a reference point.
And I'm so glad that Craig is here, because he knows the hard work that both of these policies, and so he's a community involved in the middle. Board Policy 9142 is our community, our LSDMC, I'm sorry, is our LSDMC, and 7500 is our community learning centers. To the public to read, and we want every single one of our schools to be a community learning center.
Excellent. Are there any other assignments? Ms. Hoffman?
I have one coming on the Student Achievement Committee that I think is hopefully much more straightforward. So our CFT president had asked us to look into some research around the benefits of extending the amount of time for recess and physical activity, and we were discussing whether this should lay with Student Achievement Committee or policy. And if it pleases the board, we'd like to assign it to Student Achievement first so that they can look at, look at the data and look at the research, and then based on that, if they do think it benefits our kids, they can assign it to policy, to write a policy around. So if we could assign it to Student Achievement.
Sounds good to me. Good. Um, two, just in closing, under any other assignments, just in closing, I'm going to assign to myself to ensure that you also get some dates related to a separate board retreat where we can go back and do some of the self-assessment that Mr. Nels continues to remind us of, and some deliberate goal setting. Because what I don't want to happen is these assignments come to the administration and they're not on point for any goal that we have established or created.
To that point, thank you. I think that's needed, and I understand things have changed somewhat for Saturday retreat.
Yes.
It would be great for us prior to Saturday morning to have like a general.
Oh, no, absolutely. Okay, for certain. Absolutely, and so having no other business coming, where we are. Transferring? We are transferring to your personal address.